All right. I'll call to order a work session of the Troutdale City Council Tuesday, March 18th. Let's have a roll call.
Okay. Councillor Andrews.
Here.
Councillor Allen.
Here.
Councillor what?
President.
Councillor White.
Here.
Councillor Davidson.
Here.
Councillor Leamy.
Here.
And Mayor Rittma.
Here.
All right. Public comment, which seems to be on here, so let's do it. This is public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comment should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with the consent of council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. I first will invite anyone who's participating on Zoom if they wish to address us in public comment. If not, anyone in the council chambers. Not seeing anyone, I will close public comment. We'll move on to item number three, the only item, 3.1, a discussion of revenue enhancement options to respond to the substantial increase in the cost of fire and police protection rate.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, for those of you who haven't been at one of these in a while, or it's the first time you've had a work session, under the Oregon State law in this regards, there cannot be a decision made at this meeting, so there'll be no votes tonight. And you basically get a chance to discuss a topic back and forth. And when you're done, if there is some direction to staff, that there may be a tendency to want to, you know, look at it more closely or vote on it in an actual council meeting, then that will happen. So it's okay to give preferences and tell you how you feel about certain things tonight, but nobody's going to be on the record for a vote. Anything else, Mr. Trumpke, that they need to know about a work session?
No, just generally, it isn't, it is a time for everybody to be forthcoming, open, ask all the questions you got, and tell staff if they don't have the answers to get them for you so that you can consider the items that are up for discussion. And personally, if you look at the pages 20 and 21 of the document in your packet called, it's from Eco Northwest, called something about revenue enhancement, local revenue tools, that has a good list of almost everything that's available to cities. So you do refer to that, and other than that, talk among yourselves.
All right. I hope I didn't overwhelm you with the packet, but I wanted to make sure you had all the information necessary to discuss this because this is a very important issue. It is something that, as you can tell, the LOC has a large manual on this issue because it is a common point of discussion by cities in the state of Oregon. Is that important that LOC put that much energy into a pamphlet on it? No one likes paying more, and of course, no one likes telling everybody, everybody else, that they have to pay more, which is your responsibility. And nobody wants our community to be unaffordable. But the issue of affordability is a subjective term that has a lot of intangibles. The affordability of this community is not just in dollars and cents, it's the services that are provided by the city, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's fire, whether it's parks, whether it's recreation. All of those services that are provided from the general fund go into what people consider affordable, because you could keep your fees way down low or nothing, and the citizens may pay in it by having reduced property values, because your city doesn't have all the toots and whistles that most people would expect in their community. So it is a tough conversation to have, but it's one that impacts the livability and affordability in a number of different ways of the city. And the magnitude of the problem that we're facing, I know, I don't want to be repeating myself too much in the staff memo, but the magnitude of the problem we're dealing with can't be solved with a cut here and a cut there in our budget. TV and I do what we're dealing with. As I mentioned, we are looking at, a best guesstimate at this point is somewhere in the neighborhood of a $1.5 million increase in our fire and police costs for next budget year. That's above and beyond what we might have anticipated as a 4% increase in those costs. This is a huge, as you see from the numbers with the Sheriff's Office, they are at this point asking us for a 67% increase, 2.7 million dollar increase. We're hopefully going to get that down. Fire, we don't know what Gresham is going to do. We've made our best effort so far to push them, to allow us time to adapt to their new methodology that they want to use, changing it from what we've used for 30 years. That's going to easily be another half a million dollars or more. I mean, technically, they're at asking for $1.4 million more increase just for next year. So technically, where we're at with offers is that we're looking at $4 million more for next year in those costs. I think we're going to be down to hopefully 1.5, but we just don't know yet. It's something that we're negotiating with and still working on. But giving you an idea of what 1.5 million dollars, our whole parks and facilities department for staffing and operation costs is $1.8 million. So to not increase the general fund revenues would essentially mean you have the choice of just destroying the whole parks department, parks and facilities, and we just don't have any parks. They're just left to go fallow. That is, I know I'm paying dramatic there, I know that, but just so you know how much 1.5 million dollars is, that's that whole program. Some of you on the Budget Committee last year, and it was nice to see a face I hadn't seen for a while, nice to have you, Sandy, joining us, former council member. But last year, some of you and Sandy were part of the staff going back and cutting, I think it was like 1.2 million dollars out of the general fund last year, which means we've reduced the, I hate to use the word fact, but any wiggle room we had in the general fund, we took out for this year. And so we have gotten to the point where there's not going to be easy ways to cut that general fund to get anywhere close to the 1.5 billion dollar increase in cost without considering new revenues. The changes in what we provide in the city would be dramatic if we did not have additional revenues. So it's just important to remember those things. The discussion tonight, as I said, very similar to what almost every city in Oregon has already had to deal with. Almost all cities in Oregon have already instituted a number of the most common ways of additional revenue. A fire district doesn't raise any revenue, but it takes millions of dollars out of your general fund, which you can then devote to police and parks and general administration. Police and fire fees, public safety fees, that's very common, it goes on the utility bill. A local option levy, I gave you a list of about 20-plus cities in Oregon that have, currently have local option levies. Their citizens pay extra to provide for these resources. Troutdale has never had to get to this point. We are in some ways behind the curve with our cities, but we have not had to. But I think this problem has now come to roost in Troutdale, and it's going to be a decision we have to make to preserve the services that we provide or cut the services that we're going to provide. So hopefully, you were on opportunity to brief yourselves on the issues and read how different cities have dealt with this issue, and at this point, you know, we're kind of looking for what direction council thinks they should go in this area. Do they need more information to go for a direction? But it's important that we had this work session now because next month, we're going into the budget season, and as I mentioned before, I think to all of you, we are putting into the budget for next year to be able to, at least being able to give us a budget that we can move forward with, we are putting in, hopefully, our recommendation of a $15 per month public safety fee, and no longer use the $175,000 worth of rent we get for this building to buy down the citizens' bond levy rate on their property taxes. You know, the two of them together should get us around 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars. It doesn't solve our problems, but for next year, it allows the budget to at least go forward without any significant changes to the services that we can provide our citizens. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to ramble on about.
Oh, dear.
I know, it's up to you guys now.
Well, I guess I'll say that the the fact that we're having this work session doesn't mean we're done negotiating with Gresham for fire and with the Sheriff's Office for police. We're not done, but we're we're antizipating. I guess we're being realistic. I did not call this meeting, just so you know. I, it was Ray thought we should be informed about the options we have, and I certainly agree with that. The idea of imposing a fee is not going to be easy or popular. Just a blanket, you know, fee on our utility bill. The fire district idea, I, I've done some research, and I'll just give you a brief synopsis of what I learned. I wasn't sure just how it worked, but if the city were to join a fire district, we currently have a tax base that is, it's a permanent tax rate of 3.76, this is from the, the staff report here, per thousand for, on our property taxes. That, if we joined a fire district, I wasn't sure, but that would not change necessarily unless we changed it. And what we would do is we would, if we joined Fire District 10, the rate, I took the rate number from the Gresham report in the packet here, of 2.85 per thousand. That's how much people pay who are in Fire District 10. Just understand that would, those, both would appear on our property owner's tax statements, both. So it goes up, their taxes go up. I, I hadn't, I had somehow assumed that there would be an offset in the city property taxes because we wouldn't have to pay for fire services out of the general fund. But in fact, that isn't necessarily the case. We could decide to do some sort of offset, but anyway, that's going to be a very tough sell to the voters in Troutdale, I think. I, there's a bit of history in the packet, and if you read it, that in 1995, I think it was, we voted to leave Fire District 10 and contract with Gresham for fire. And as it says right in the packet, what we, what happened was, people no longer had to pay the Fire District 10 tax rate on their tax bills. And they, there was no increase in the Troutdale tax rate. So everybody saved money. A much easier sell.
Except for our general fund didn't save any money.
Our general fund didn't save any money. We had to, in fact, pay for fire services out of the general fund. But taxes, people, the taxes people paid went down. Well, that, that was, I remember when it happened. I didn't fully understand what was going on, but taxes were going to be cheaper, it's easy to vote yes. So we voted to leave Fire District 10 and contract with Gresham. Going the other way isn't going to be as easy. So that was a bit of a revelation from your staff report, Ray, and I hadn't realized how hard it is. I did ask Ed Trumpke before this meeting, how do cities convince the voters to join a, a fire district then? If they've been paying for fire services out of their city taxes, and they have to join a fire district and they're, they'll be paying additional taxes, how is, how do, how do the voters in that, being affected by that, get convinced to vote for it? And so Ed is looking into that. There must be a way that, because it's happening, as Ray said, all over the state.
Mayor, I could just, generally what I talked about with other cities. Number one, especially for Troutdale, we would have a vote in how the fire department's operating. So we tell the citizens that we are, you're actually going to have control over the board because you can vote on the board members. Second of all, it frees up money from the general fund so that we can put more money into law enforcement and parks, which are usually generally very popular among the citizens. And three, it allows us, because of that control, to maybe change the service model. There's arguments that you don't really need four per apparatus, you can use three firefighters and it can reduce costs that way. Maybe most of you may know, 90-plus percent of all fire department calls are medical calls. There's not a fire. And so there's fast response vehicles that can save money without sending out a $2 million truck. So there are certain things that you can communicate to the citizens. I'm not saying it'll work in our particular case, but those are the things you generally argue.
Well, and that's all well and good, but their taxes are going up. Our taxes are going up, the citizens' taxes. They would be voting for a not inconsiderable increase, you know, some percentage, I don't know, it looked like it might be 30% or something. That's the hard sell. Yeah, yeah, control over the fire district and so on are good points, and I don't discount those, Ray, but the hard sell would be convincing the voters, yeah, higher taxes are going to be good for you, please vote yes. That's not an easy sell, at least in Troutdale, in my experience. So, I don't know. Anyway, yeah, please, I, I'm, I've, those are the thoughts I had to impart. Yeah, John?
So when would this go on the ballot? Did we decide? Is this a November deal?
Well, if we, if we imposed like a $15 fee on the utility bills, it wouldn't go on the ballot. The voters would have a chance to express their displeasure at the next election of the council. So just keep that in mind. But it wouldn't go on ballot, but there might be objections raised. As far as fire district, yeah, Ray?
I'm just going to say, some of you've already heard this explanation if you're on the public safety working group, but a fire district will take a couple of years to get to the ballot, because, one, you've got to get yourself and Fire District 10 to put it on the ballot, because we have to agree to join Fire District 10, and the people of Fire District 10, about 5,000 of them, have to agree to take us in. Or the other way to do it is you get the county commission to establish a new fire district, and then you have one vote for all the people out here, whether it's Gresham, Wood Village, Fairview, Troutdale, or the unincorporated areas to join the fire district. And then there's only one vote, which is what a consultant came to us about nine or 10 months ago, I think, that he's wagging, talking about that process, and that would probably be the better way to go about it. A local option levy, it takes again, a couple of years to be able to go through, and you have to start the campaign process to get people to understand what, when, why. You've got to pick the proper election, because some elections are better than others on turnout and what you're more likely to pass. And as the mayor said, there's long-term and short-term solutions. For right now, the only short-term solution we have essentially is the public safety fee on the utility bill. The other ones you could do, you could do, you know, personal income tax or sales tax in Troutdale immediately. I'm not sure how those will fly. They didn't work anywhere else in the state. I think Mokomo County and Metro each have one small one, but they're voted on by most of the people of City of Portland. So, so you've got long-term and short-term, and one of the things I've said before is that if you do a short-term solution, protect us for a couple of years, and then you want to pursue one of the other long-term, you know, issues, one of the things you do with the citizens is say, part of that ballot measure is, and the, the public safety fee will be canceled if you pass this. Because people get worried about, once you start taking on this, you take on this, you won't give up the old one. And I think that's the only way you could sell it, is to make sure this was a stopgap measure and the long-term issues that you get a chance to vote on. Hopefully that answered your question.
So it wouldn't be on the ballot right away, but eventually. Anyone else care to say something?
I always want to protect how much taxes I'm personally paying. I am concerned for, you know, residents who've been here a long time, who are struggling paycheck to paycheck, and I think raising it to, I mean, I understand why you want to raise it to 15, but if somebody is on a fixed income in their home, going up $15 means no milk, no eggs, no, you know, no bread.
Doesn't that equal about one dozen egg these days?
That could be.
We do have low-income and handicap individuals reduction on the utility bills too, to help those individuals.
Do people know that?
Yeah, we advertise it all the time, and we've got probably 40 or 50, Eric, do you know how many people?
About $20,000 a year that I
That we subsidize people's bills who can't afford it. And we understand, we've all, I don't know if anybody knows Mrs. Sutherland, who lives just adjacent up here, the oldest living resident in Troutdale, 92, 93, lived there since 1967. She talks about that. I mean, they do get increases, you know, cost of living increases for social security, but she's also on the subsidized utility bills because of her situation. So we do have that for people who do particularly struggle.
They'd still pay the $15.
Yeah, they would, but the rest of their bill has already been reduced. And just on that issue, I pulled up random, similar comparable houses in Portland and Gresham, even with the $15 a month fee, our utility bills are still less than both those cities for comparable uses. So if you're thinking about what the market is doing out there, if you look at those utility bills, we're still going to be less even at that $15. I mean, the City of Portland charges a lot, Gresham obviously has their own fee on there, and their water and sewer is more expensive than ours. So as I said, total affordability, Troutdale is still going to be more affordable than those other two jurisdictions. I didn't get any other cities, I just had people send me their water bills from those other cities who I knew. Yeah, that.
Thank you. So some clarity on the Fire District, since it's a sedentary source of revenue, adding both of the tax rates together, is this something that would be happening for the foreseeable future, joining a district, or is this something that we would eventually phase out on the other side when it comes to the taxes we're collecting? And replacing with what we're collecting for the Fire District, or is this something that is just kind of doubled up for the foreseeable future if that's the route we decide to go?
Well, I, my understanding of how it works is the, your property is, is both in the City of Troutdale, you pay city taxes, it's also in the district, you pay district taxes, and until that changes, I mean, yes, something, there could be a vote to merge or I don't know what, that could change it, but unless that changes, those would be for the foreseeable future.
And the main benefit of joining a fire district for a person, aside, general fund aside, as far as extra money coming in, is what exactly?
That, Ray gave us some examples, but go ahead.
If you talk to the fire union, they will tell you several advantages, you know, we've already talked about, you get to control your, the fire, the fire service, you get to affect the service model. The fire union will tell you, for them, they like it because it's a stable source of funding for our fire services. Right now, the Gresham Fire Department that we experience, they have to fight for their budget against the police department, against the parks department, and so they're battling with all them, and their board, bless their hearts, they're not fire professionals. Fire District 10's board, or any fire district, usually the people on the board have experience in the fire department, and have experience, so they understand what they're doing and they have, they don't have to fight anybody else for the funding. This is why they're so popular. I mean, Clackamas County Fire District, one, it covers a lot of cities and area in Clackamas County, everybody's heard of Twolton Valley Fire Service, they cover everything on the west side except for Hillsborough, and as I don't know if I mentioned staff report, Hillsborough, the only reason they're not part of Twolton Valley is because the people approved a local option levy to fund their fire department, which is about the same level as they would have been if they wanted to be in the Twolton Valley Fire Department, but they just wanted to have a Hillsborough Fire Department, and the citizens agreed to pay more. So those would be the advantages that people say about a fire district. But honestly, for the long-term, I don't know who can predict 10, 20 years down the road, but essentially, if you get a local option levy, and we have enough money, we can start our own Troutdale Police Department, well, then we have more money left over to be able to afford fire service that we have now. If we join a fire district, that frees up currently 2.7 million dollars a year, that we have that money to put into fire service and parks. So if you don't, you don't really want to do all three, one of those two voter-approved ones should be good for the long-term. That's why most cities are either part of a fire district or have a local option levy. Then some of them add the fee on top of it, but most of them stand alone. Like I said, Gresham has a local option levy and a fee, both. Tigard and I think Happy Valley have a local option levy and are in a fire district. But I said, everybody has to choose, has had to choose one of these options.
Yeah, and I've talked with folks that are either living in Westland or Tigard, Gresham, about their extra utility fees, just to kind of see if they're, just kind of pick their brain a little bit and see if it's something that they notice, if they feel it's fair, if they feel like they're getting adequate services for what they're being told it's for, and for the most part, at least in Tigard and in Westland, in Westland is like $40 a month extra for transportation. So, you know, for some people, I guess it's different, but the general consensus I was getting is that if they have nicer roads and the police and fire are always responding on time, they don't really seem to have a problem with it, but I know that's not always the case, and obviously, everyone's in a different income gap, but yeah, they kind of poke around a little bit too.
I should add, Mayor, that if any of the new council members want the minutes from the two meetings in 2015, it might give them some background as to why we did give up our Troutdale Police Department. Just as background, I know several of you have seen those minutes, but I don't think all of you have, so I can get those to you. Just if you want to just read the long meetings that happened years ago, and you'll learn how wise your mayor was at the time, almost future telling, so.
Yeah, the, to me, the trouble with trying to sell people paying higher taxes for a fire district is that they're perfectly satisfied with the fire service as it is, absent some catastrophe or something, that, that they expect the city to provide it, or the city or a district, they expect the service to be provided. I'm just, I'm just thinking how most taxpayers are going to see it, that why should I pay, why should I pay more for a fire district? I don't care if I vote for the person that runs the fire department. I expect them to do their job, and I expect if they're part of, if they're paid for by the city, I expect the city to provide it, if it's a district, I expect the district to provide it. I'm happy to be talked out of that view, but I actually think that's how most people would see it, and so that makes it a very tough sell. I think tying it into possibly freeing up money that we could use for police, forming our own police department, might be easier, or a way to sell it anyway, it's kind of two unrelated things, but the, the fact that we don't have a Troutdale Police Department, I think is much more noticeable. My feeling is it's much more noticeable to people than having some sort of fire district, fire department. Yeah, please.
Yeah, just to continue the discussion, I would agree, and I think granted, asserted that was done by the Public Safety Group and anything about, that was largely feedback gathered in support of having our own kind of dedicated police force, again, especially if especially if it's going to end up saving us money on building and with the renegotiation as far as what they're being, you know, what they're quoting us. But I do think if we are able to kind of capitalize on, I mean, that's, I know that's a whole separate discussion you guys are working on in the working group when it comes to temporary measures in between the formation of that and how long it's going to take. But yeah, I mean, I do think that's not necessarily unrelated, especially in conjunction with people being more supportive of that than there would be a, nobody cares what fire truck shows up in front of their house, they just want it to show up on time.
Yeah. Well, I think, actually, they're very related because they're both hitting our budget at the same time this year and that we're, that's why, well, I don't recall ever discussing adding a fifteen dollar fee to our utility bill or any kind of fee like that. I just, it, this is a first and that it won't be popular, but it might be necessary to sell it as vitally important. I welcome any ideas and we're all going to face it, we're all going to face the voters. We're going to have to defend it.
John, I'm sitting here thinking, so are we going to need to just package this together? One, the voters, the police and the fire. Because I think the voters potentially feel burned. They voted in a new police station, a bond for a police station. Then we sold our police department and they got worse service. So to go out to them and ask for a Fire Department bond or something could come back and bite us.
Yeah, well, it's being.
We don't have to get it all together.
I think it's being pitched as a public safety surcharge or fee or something that combines both. But you're right, that's going to be, that's going to make it harder to sell. The fact that they feel a bit burned about.
Extra expensive, but we got egg in our face really.
Well, keep in mind that, I mean, we are having, we are, we are reaping the rewards of that effort, but none of us was, was actually involved in, in making those decisions. That doesn't, that doesn't excuse us. We're elected officials and we, we have to take the responsibility for figuring out how to, how to deal with it. I think, I don't know, my thinking is the voters of Troutdale are, are very unhappy when we ask for more money, usually, that's my experience. But we have convinced the voters to, when we built the police building, when we moved the sewer plant, those are the two big ones I can think of. Maybe there were others, but they were, they were convinced. So, and really, for the combining police and fire, the reason I can think of to combine police and fire is that the police, having our own police department back would be more warmly received. The Fire Department, I think Zach said it well, they just want somebody to show up. They don't particularly care what name is on the side of the truck. I totally agree with that. And, but having our own police department really would be something we could sell. I don't know if there's a way to make a, a pitch that works for the fifteen dollar fee. Yeah, Jeffrey, go ahead.
I think we're kind of, I feel like we're sort of getting off track. I think we have two issues at hand. One, we have the here and now and our lack of funding for our budget for this next year. We're going to have an increase and what do we, what can we do? What are the options in front of us to help offset that cost? And then we have a second issue at hand, which is we can keep thinking this year, next year, and then next year, think about the next year, and that year after that, think about, or we can start to think about the future now and what do we do long-term? And so for the here and now, hearing that we have, we already last year cut, you know, one point two million dollars from the budget, things that would be accessible for a community, like a skate park. And I think that was like five to seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe eight hundred, something to that effect, that we said, you know, we want to remove that from the budget. To me, that's something that is, that can be used by the community. I mean, that's something that can be used by other people in our, our community, our neighboring cities. That's not here. We don't have that because we're, we don't have, we were trying to think in the future of the problem we currently have. And now we're still going to be short of that money. So what can we do? I think that this, adding the service fee onto is something that a majority of other cities do. And I think it helps offset our costs in the next coming years of, you know, whatever that's going to be total, if you look at everything, I think it's somewhere around one point two million dollars. So that significantly reduces the amount of money we would need to cut from somewhere else. So I think it is a great idea. And I think it's an idea that we should very, very strongly consider. And I'm not saying that without thinking about, hey, you know what, we all, nobody wants to spend more money. But the reality is, is if we don't do something like this, then we're going to lose our Parks Department. We're going to lose, I don't know, part of public service, public works. Eventually, you have to keep cutting and cutting and cutting because we have to provide public safety and we have to provide fire service. And so for the here and now, for currently, our option is, is to do something like, I don't know, some income tax or sales tax or something, which seems ridiculous and that's going to drive people away. Or we just do this, which doesn't suck, absolutely. But I think it raises the money that we need to be successful as a city. And then the second part of it is, what do we do long-term? You know, these costs are only going to continue to go up and they're going up faster than we can collect taxes. So what do we do going forward? And after like participating in these groups and thinking and talking to people in the fire industry and whatever, I think, you know, as the Public Safety Working Group, it's kind of collectively and some of these, you know, surveys we put out, reestablishing the Troutdale Police Department is probably going to be our best bet of how, one, we want to police and two, to cost control that. But you still have this fire service cost. And I think down the road, I think personally going to Fire District makes sense, not only for like me, the service that we can get, but also because firefighters support that. You know, I mean, that's, I think it's important to like look at the people who do the job and what do they want and what do they support? Is that a huge ask from everybody? Absolutely. It's like, I mean, I can see it. And I think we talked about it in the, in the past year. If we were going to go to a Fire District, we could make it like this five-year transition period where, you know, you get buy-down on your property taxes, whether it's the city and the general fund. And then after five years, that kind of expires and you go back to normal. But that also provides us with significant more funds in our general fund to do things for the city. Build a skate park, look at the city hall building, you know, to do capital projects that we just can't do now. Like there's no way that I could get behind to do these things that are bigger and grander to make our city nicer. And so I personally think that doing something like this service fee is like the only option we have to do right now that we can do, that can make a difference with everybody and their livability. And then again, the long term, I think is, it's a bigger plan. And I think it takes more cooperation with our neighboring cities to execute that.
So then does the fifteen dollars go away once we implement a new system down the road?
If it was up to me, I would say no. And the reason is that once you, once people are giving something, you kind of tend to forget about it, right? And we could still use that money for good in the city. But if as a group, we're all like, dude, that's a lot to ask from everybody. These are a bunch of asks all at the same time and it's like, but we, so you could build that in to say, and I could be talked into that, like, hey, if we, you know, you approve this Fire District, we will remove the utility fee. I mean, that's just part of the package and that if we have to sell that, that obviously makes way more sense than not giving the Fire District, in my opinion. But I'd like to keep both because the more we can do for the city, the nicer the city is, the more happier people are and the more livable this place is and bring people, in my opinion.
Yeah, it just seems like it'd be an easier sell if you could say.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I've never seen a fee that hasn't, not only will it not go away, it will increase.
Exactly.
It's always a first time, but I, I think actually we, we do need to talk about both the short term and the long term here. I mean, I, I think that's, it's good what you're talking about, Jeffrey. I, I just think we need to be thinking about both of them. Yeah, Ray.
I just want to add some content to what Councilor One was saying. Just so you'll know, and I'm going to repeat this when we have our budget committee, I have already cut a bunch of stuff out of the parks requests for next year before it's even going to get to you, whether it's lawn mowers, whether it's work on buildings in the city, they can put off replacing a roof at Glen Otto, things like that. Cut those out of there. They've also asked for an additional FTE the last two years and I've said no before it even gets to the Budget Committee because I just didn't want to see that general fund get overly burdened. But with the parks, we are adding the new Sandy Waterfront Trail Park that is going to take extra work on the same crew. And so that could use more resource in the Parks Department. The other thing, and only the mayor knows this because the staff just learned this two weeks ago, just as an idea of what could happen in parks, is that we just learned that since two thousand, the city of Troutdale owns with Metro fifteen acres next to the Sandy Palisades neighborhood. Of those fifteen acres, approximately five is in the Beaver Creek Canyon, ten of it is flat farmland. That we are partial owners with Metro. And the agreement is it has to be used for open space recreational uses. We, it's never been in our parks mastermind because we didn't know it existed. It was well before any of the staff people knew about it. And so I'm working with Metro to figure out what's going on there. But I, I know some of you have expressed the desire for game parks, for facilities for softball, soccer, things like that. That would be a very attractive location for something like that because we just learned that we own with Metro recreational property about ten flat acres next to our neighborhoods. But those are the kind of things we might be able to afford and something you might discuss if we had the resources in the general fund to do things like that. Of course, we use grant money whenever we can for those things like that. But even if you use grant money to build a park, you still have to maintain the park and that costs FTEs and, and equipment. So just to let you know, there are great needs in parks right now to improve our parks and maybe expand our parks. So it's not like we wouldn't have things to offer our citizens if they are paying more. Just so you're aware of some of those. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I can remember it a little different on budget because I brought, I saw that we were trying to hire a parks person and I went to block that move and you guys supposed to already hire him. So at that point, I dropped, dropped the conversation.
It was over.
That was the last.
I think Nico, no, it wasn't last year, it was maybe the year before, two years ago, that was Nico.
Was it?
Yeah, yeah, that was two budgets ago. But yes, you're right. But we didn't, we didn't have to leave the budget.
We're the A student of parks, you know, we got eighty-eight acre college park and, you know, we just built the new one along the river, which I love. But just like Marley during our presentation said, ninety percent of the people that go to run out of park don't live in Troutdale. So it's like, why don't we capitalize on that? I think we need to get creative on our solutions or what we can do. Everything on here is, is coming out of our hide. And in two thousand eight, when we had the Great Recession, we laid off eight and a half full-time FTEs. That's how we got out of that jam. So it's like, I'm not saying I want to do that either, but my concern about police and fire.
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, I, I will get red in the face and yell at you as much as I can if anybody suggests at this point cutting FTE because that basically cuts services to people. That just cuts the programs we have. We have so many popular things, whether it's First Fridays, whether it's movies in the park, the events we have down at Glen Otto, we have a lot of things and it's going to have to come out of those. And as I've said, most cities.
We don't have our top priority, which is life saving, police and fire.
Yeah, but like I said, to get to the cuts we need, you're going to have to have no parks at all if you're going to cut enough meat out of this thing to do it.
I'm just looking for a contribution on your side of the fence.
I was going to add that as last. Some of you probably know I've talked to, but we are already instituting paid parking in Glen Otto Park because most people go down there are not from the city. And so we're going to be having a kiosk in there, we're going to be doing, we just set up today, we had a meeting with, with Eric about the process of getting that in there by June and then having that open. And in the budget, we don't know what it's going to look like, but in the budget, we put a line item of ten thousand dollars a year in additional incomes. It's not a lot, but it's some way to, what you just said is to make sure, hey, just like the gas tax, most of that is paid by out of, outside of the city. Parking down there in the income we get from that is mostly from people outside the city. So absolutely, we are trying to look at those things too.
You know, I think every time you mention red light cameras, we've all, well, the old council was upset against it. So it's like, that's one I'd just like to not see on a list anymore. I don't know if we can get consensus on that.
The staff's, the staff's job is to give you options, it's not to make decisions for you.
That's about the fourth time it's, it's come up, so. Yeah, it's right here.
Of examples?
Oh, yes, there is. I just went right by.
As if you haven't noticed, it's kind of irritating.
A lot of cities use that. I think you see, you know, Portland, Tigard, Beaverton, I think Wilsonville has some. It's popular. I don't know how much, I'm trying to figure that out now. I don't know how much really income generating it really is. Mostly for cities, it's a way of enhancing enforcement without hiring new police officers.
Well, I'd like to see a more creative list and just, I can give this building as a great example. You know, we passed a levy for our residents and now it's a county-wide service, but Troutdale's the only one paying for this building and it should be that way. The big benefits of us merging with the county were mainly for Springdale Corbide, Maywood Park, Salve's Island. Our policing went down. We used to have a reputation of this is the town not to mess around in or speed in or do anything because they were on it and I would rather just pay them more money and kept them. But, you know, just if, if you go look ten, twenty years down the road, what this stuff's going to look like. And this is a, this is a patch job on a worn-out tire. And I think what we really need is, you know, our own place that we've talked about and our own fire. And I'm thinking Gresham is going to have in curiousity trouble getting to us, especially when they lower the speed limit and shrink the freight lanes down and congestion's occurring. I think it's much easier to go east and west than it is to go north and south these days. And if we, if we started it, if we used the money instead of paying it to them to start our own, we'd have control. Yeah, I think it would change to a life-saving. The, the Fire Department we have isn't going to save your life and people don't know that. Mitch Schneider knew that and he, he was trying to fix it. Because he said the record is like six minutes if you're on the ground for them to be able to revive you. You have to get there quicker. That's why they have that national standard. I forget what it is, it's something around three minutes to get to a response time. And the other cities do it, even Little Mahalon has a, has a fire station on the ground level on their city halls above it. And, you know, they're self-contained because there's no one that can go that, that distance to get to their town. And I'm just thinking we bite the bullet now and then we could start contracting later with, with Village and Fairview. Right now, they're getting too good of a deal, they're getting a much better deal than we are. And you got to realize, I've been on the Fire User Board for a long time and we have about six fires. We have about six fires a year that are either a beauty park fire or a car fire. And maybe one house fire every, every year or every other year. It's, it's not a lot. Our industry down the road has a, a lot of fire, um, they almost have their own fire department down there, Amazon and FedEx. They're pretty self-contained. Same with emergency services. And since our calls are mostly um, medical, maybe there's a creative way to look at that too. Um, I know Ray, our Lake Oswego hires one of the AMR ambulances to be in their city boundaries at all times. So that might be something we could look at. But if I'm going to pay more money, I, I want to see an improvement in the services. I don't just want to see um, this patch job that we're doing. Try to solve the problem in, in a big way. And then not get, we're really going to get their mercy the next contract when it comes up. And we're still, we're still not saving the lives that I'd like to see us save. And then um, yeah, it's like, it's, it's not like we didn't see this coming. And um, the one thing we asked for was that we have a viable option. You know, so we have something to negotiate with. And it's like where, like every time Ray gave an update, I asked, where's our, where's our option? What are we going to use as leverage? And, and now we're, now we're really painted into a corner. So I'd like to see us look at maybe solving this in a bigger way. Let's go ahead, Ray.
Oh, I was just going to say a couple of things is, um, yeah, having any long-term option, great idea. We'd love to have better control. Councilor White of Fire Police, absolutely, as your city manager. I would love to have better control of those services so that we can be better, more responsive to the citizens. Um, but the, the long-term solutions are going to take long-term to get to. We can't do a fire district immediately and we can't do a local option levy immediately. Um, and if anybody else has better ideas for where else we can turn to, to enhance our revenues, um, great. I, this is why I gave you the 80-page memo. It was just finished in December from the League of Oregon Cities. If you say, see anything in there that, that we're missing or we should look, great. I'd love to hear about it. Um, all, all I know is, and, and I don't mean this to sound lazy in the sense that we should forge our own path, but a lot of cities in Oregon have already gone down this road. And those are the paths that they've chosen is the best way to solve the problem. I, I only think, I only advocate for a police fee, police-fire, public safety fee, whatever you want to call it, is only because it's a short-term solution that we can do now. But definitely, we have to look for long-term s- um, solutions that give us um, more control. Um, it's probably, a fire district or police is going to cost the citizens a bit more. But you guys live in the neighborhoods. If you start talking to the people, I, I think what our experience with it was getting this building approved, the citizens are amenable to paying more if it's to protect them and provide them more control of law enforcement. That, that, that seems to be a good, I don't mean this in a bad way, but a good hook. That's something they can stand up for. Will they vote for a new city hall that we need? Probably not as readily as they'll support the police department and getting back those cars that say Troutdale on the side. Um, because having that control would really be nice, so.
I was going to say, Ray, in the, the LOC article you've sent us, there's really no other options for additional revenue resources than what they're providing here for us that are in reality. And where it would be great, I think, to have our own fire like station and services. Like that upfront cost is going to be astronomical. And it's not something that I think that we could support. And so looking at what, how do you get better resources? How do you get, have additional revenue? Is go, is by having a fire district that will support the fire services. And recognize that you, hey, we need another fire station here so we can support everybody in this fire district more efficiently. And you can't do that unless you're willing to pony up the money and make that decision to do that. So I think that that, to me, that's the best long-term solution. Uh, but that, you know, still in the, in the short term, we still have to identify, how do we, how do we capture this budget shortfall that we have now? Obviously, the, the easiest one is that public safety fee, like, I mean, as annoying as it is. Nobody, I don't want to pay more money. You know, nobody on this council, I think, wants to pay any more money. I know Tanny doesn't. I know Ray would not want to if he lived here. But the reality is to have what we want, you have to pay for it.
By the way, I do pay extra. I live in a fire district. Boring, it's now Black and the Fire District one. Sorry, Zach.
On that note of, I guess, not having anything outside of that list, I was kind of um, thinking up some other things. And you mentioned that other acreage that we have potentially for parks. So I mean, even a portion of that or whatever we have available, have we looked at what kind of income we would be able to create or revenue for by um, like instituting like urban farming and agricultural leasing or even just city buildings that are not be, or underutilized perhaps? Doing a lease through that for something else, like just for the time being to help bring in some additional income?
Uh, yes, one, we don't, we don't even have enough city buildings for all city staff. We're, we're leasing space right now and we're cramming them into other buildings when we lost city hall. Um, as for property that's available, that acreage, um, and, and I feel so stolen from, um, the, uh, that, that property is being leased and Metro is collecting all the lease payments and we own 14% of that property, but it's about $3,000 a year. So not huge. I'm not necessarily going on accounting for Metro, but um, that's all, it's, it's just used for ferry fields. And so it's not like, but other than that, we don't have any income stream that we're not already benefiting from. And the problem is if you like lease out this space, like we do the Sam Cox building, it takes staff time and resources to be able to manage those um, rentals. And we do that now for Sam Cox. And we make enough money off them to be able to pay for those services. But it's not really a moneymaker in the sense of that. I mean, we had this issue a couple of years ago and I just think of Councilor White's um, wife was a big proponent of this when we kind of talked about usage of the Sam Cox building is, a wedding venue is really, really expensive if you go out there and look for one to rent. The Sam Cox building is affordable. And now she advocated really strongly to make sure we keep that building affordable for people for weddings and receptions. And so that's the thing, when you're in, in government, it's really hard to charge a lot more to make it anywhere near a profit center. Um, so anyway, you know, it's a great suggestion and those are the things, things that if anybody's got an idea, I'd love to explore it.
Have we looked at um, any potential option for like even out of just like the Depot Park or online or anything like, like selling Troutdale stuff? Like.
We do. You've not been into Depot? The Depot.
I have, I have, yeah, I have, but um.
Cups, glasses, shirts.
I've noticed there's nothing online or anything too, so. Uh, I mean, I looked on our website, I looked on Explore Troutdale, there's no like shop portion that was easily found at least from me clicking around, so.
I'm putting that.
I know it's probably not much, but again, any way we can make any money on the side.
Not a lot of money, but I'm putting it on the list.
Okay, just the less we have to ask for on any kind of utility fee, if we can make it up, that's right.
What's going on? Oh, I see, serious. All right. I uh, well, yeah, it uh, unfortunately, it, I've had several citizens say we should charge the sheriff more for rental of this building. Uh, the thing is, it's just a drop in the ocean of what we need to make up. That, um, not, not that the idea of selling stuff is, is a good one. But we need to think of them all, think of them all. No, that's all right.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody counts in like, I mean, even echo kind of what Councilor White was saying. I mean, if, if we do, if we are able to realistically look at the options on saving money on not renegotiating anything for the services we're not getting and then put that money towards our like move, making those moves now to start that. I mean, I already saw a Troutdale police car out there parked over on the side, you know?
There's still a few around.
It was a start, you know?
That's the last one and it's a zombie car just as, hopefully people slow down.
Exactly. And I, I get that, I get that, but you know.
Did I put that on the public airways gang?
But yeah, no, I think there's some merits to that. And I do think um, even short-term, obviously saving that money and putting it towards the long-term goal could go a long way. Um, I, I said before, I mean, the citizens seem to kind of voice that. And I think um, starting to invest in that now and putting that money reallocating into that would be a pretty substantial plan. Um, you know, I have a couple of things written down. I'll, I'll give up the floor for now and kind of refine them, but um, but yeah, I mean, I, I want to go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but you know, I just want to say that um, I've been on budget a long time. And um, every time we got a new business like FedEx, I'd say, hey, can you put some of that money aside for a city hall? Let's start saving for a city hall. And um, you know, it all gets spent before we even see it. And then the same thing with the, the Amazon money. I didn't see any, any of it coming for any projects or any, any benefit to the town.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we, we saved, yeah, it got swallowed up. It paid the loan on the URA and we are owed back $5 million from the URA. So we'll get it back in the general fund as soon as we get an approved development plan and we get, we sell that property. So yeah, thank you, Councilor White. That's one of my big pushes.
Save some of that for, it was eligible for police and fire. But I guess what I'm leading on this is that we have the new battery farm. And I know the revenue won't be showing up for a while, but why don't we earmark that new revenue for police and fire? And let's start, let's start, let's start thinking ahead. You know, so, so we're not in these tough situations that we're in and they're only going to get tougher. That's, I, I know everyone thinks, you know, there's two opinions of, of how we could do our own fire. And one is a very efficient, um, cheaper model that was worked out by a firefighter. He's the fire chief of, well, retired fire chief of Corbett. He happened to live on Blue Lake Park and Interlock and Road has, has the worst response times. They have like 12-minute response times. And then there's no pressure in the fire hydrants because it's too small of a line. So he, and it bothered him, so he kept formulating a plan. Tanny was on the team, I was on it. And um, we have a viable option. I think that really, really helped us negotiate because they were like, man, Troutdale, Wood Village and Fairview could actually pull this off. We're going to lose all that revenue. But the main reason for his motivation in doing it was to save lives. And it would have, it would have saved lives. And um, we'd be sitting a lot prettier today. His model was very affordable, very efficient. In fact, it's also what led to the quick response vehicles that Gresham adopted. Where you have a vehicle that's out, it's not sitting at the station, it's out. And it can, and it can get there first. And they have enough equipment onboard to, to put out the fire without waiting for the full battalion and the ladder truck and everything else. So there were some improvements off that. As far as I know, I think the negotiation team, there was a PowerPoint presentation on that. I don't think anyone's even seen it. And I, I think we're missing out. Cause if we, if we talk to somebody else, they're going to say, well, it's $20 million to build one fire station. And it doesn't have to be that way. They could be very simplified, basic fire stations to service the few fires we have. Cause it's mostly medical. And I say we, we go that route and when we work on um, um, providing the service from Troutdale for Wood Village and Fairview. Yeah, that's what I think.
Mayor, um, first of all, great idea. I've already told the other two cities that if we choose to go that route and the citizens choose to support that, that would be a great way to spread the wealth. And since in East County, we support those other two cities. Um, but just so you'll know, they, they haven't been released yet for you. Just so you know, this city staff is just not sitting in the back room trying to come up with their own ideas about these things. Because I don't know how fire districts work. I don't know how the economics work. Um, we just got, and I, I provided a copy to the mayor. Um, we just got our report from Tiberius, which they did a complete economic analysis of what a fire district would do in terms of raising money and in, how it would impact city income due to compression, which is almost none. The other thing is, is that the three cities uh, yet met yesterday morning with um, Triton, um, which is the company that we hired to do a study on what are our fire service options? Fire district, staying with Gresham, uh, varying different forms of a fire district. Um, and that individual, they were in town from out of town yesterday, met with everybody. They met with Gresham Fire and they met with Fire District 10, they met with Gresham Fire Union. Um, they're going to get us, uh, hopefully in the next month, a very comprehensive report about what our options are for fire. And I can just tell you from what he said yesterday, several of them are going to be cheaper for our, our citizens than what we're paying now um, to Gresham. And so, but we're going to get that report. So just so you know, you're going to get those two reports that deal with the fire issue and, and trying to get some more autonomy, even though there are obviously more costs involved. It gives us a lot more control of those things because it's, it's Councilor White. And I, I agree with him that right now, um, there are legitimate questions, not, there's no criticism here of Gresham Fire, but there's legitimate discussions and questions about how that service model is provided and could it be done differently at a lower cost? So those are things we're all trying to look into.
We have, yeah, go ahead.
I guess, uh, I don't, I just identify with uh, what Councilor White is saying. I think to just ask the taxpayers to just put the bill for all this stuff is unfair. And we need to have uh, all the options on the table, whether that's cuts to the city, which I'm not suggesting, but I would at least like to look at and at least evaluate that on both sides of the table. Uh, the only thing um, other that I haven't seen mentioned is this transit lodging tax. You know, Marley suggested that in her report, that the city makes a pile of money from tourism. That's not asking our uh, citizens to pay anything. I don't know how much money it could generate, but it might be something to look at.
Yeah, we, we have a ordinance that's in germination over at Ed's office um, to tax the Airbnbs and the VRBOs of, of the city. Um, currently, I think our annual revenues from our current TLT, Eric, is somewhere near $600,000, $700,000 annually. Eight, nine, 900,000. Um, I can envision that um, the VRBOs and the Airbnbs in town are going to approach anything near the hotel to where we get, I think we have six hotels that pay into that fund. But it, it may be 50, $100,000 a year. So yeah, we're definitely going to bring that to council. Again, it, it may not be a lot, um, but every little bit helps. And like I said, we are looking at what other cities are doing and trying to learn from uh, what they've done because we just haven't been in this situation before.
And I would also say that Metro owes us any money, we should claw it off.
Yeah, I, I know. I think that's about $300 a year for, you know, 20 years. And I want that $6,000.
That's right, it's going to go. Does the RV park pay?
Yes, they do pay. Yes, they do pay transit lodging tax on them. They are the slower of the pays, I think, though, aren't they?
Well, they, they, it's a long tortured history as it relates to the RV park. They went to the council and pressured them to give them a carve-out. So there's only a very small portion of their residents that pay. And the, the transient lodging tax is revenue that goes into the general fund. So it is used to pay for police and fire services already. Not that we could use more of it, but there is, there is a bill in the legislature to, in the current session to uh, modify or potentially loosen up some of the current restrictions on the transient lodging tax. Because currently, any new addition transient lodging tax, 70% of it has to go toward tourism. So if you were to increase it, only 30% of it could potentially go toward police fire. But they're, they're looking at loosening that up a little bit, but that remains to be seen.
Is that something we could change on our end with the money that already automatically goes into tourism? Could we cut that back? Does that make sense?
The 6.95, the 6.95 is hmm, 118,000 is what we have in the current adopted budget. And we're obligated based on the current both statute as well as our municipal code to use it toward tourism. We, we spend more than that on visitor center. So that's our, that's essentially how we comply with that obligation. If the law, if the state statute was loosened, then potentially we could work with Ed to modify our, our municipal code to give us more flexibility. But at the moment, we're hemmed in by the state statute.
Well, and it, it, it has a built-in constituency um, that wants it spent on. Well, and it, it has a built-in constituency that wants it spent on tourism, unfortunately. So it's hard to, I mean, we're collecting it, but that's why we end up being forced to, we are forced to spend it on tourism. We have to if we're going to collect it. Otherwise, we can't collect it. That's, that's my recollection anyway of it. All right, I see. Well, I'll just say before Zach, I'll just say the, all right, we have the issue of, shall we direct staff to come back with a proposal for some sort of service fee, public safety service fee? That's a question that's before us, we're discussing. And, and then we're not going to make any decision that we're going to join a district or not. We're in negotiations with Gresham and the county and the sheriff on police and fire. And we're not going to be able to make a decision on that right now, but we, we, this is our time to talk about, you know, what's realistic long-term. Zach, go ahead.
Oh, well, first to comment on it too. I mean, like the tourism that has been, that, that fund has been spent on and everything. I feel like they've done a really good job. I mean, that's the really big, like art festival weekend, because like that we saw the presentation for, so I mean, like that stuff does bring in money to the city too. So, I mean, it makes, it makes sense to a degree to like not necessarily look to minimize that in addition, I think. But I know I voiced this before, but I guess just kind of going back to police and revenues. I know they worked out a separate deal with fire in Wood Village and Fairview. When it comes to policing, do, and I've kind of tuned in here and there, but just to kind of get another finger on the pulse, so to speak, like what is the reality between if we did decide to go our own route with the Troutdale Police Department and have the two additional cities kind of partner with us, pay us, because we're housing the building, generate revenue stream that way. That way we kind of have our own tri-cities police force that's dedicated more to each of our cities individually with, you know, cars and stuff stationed in each one. If I'm not mistaken, I think Fairview had an additional building to deutilize for that. So maybe they would pay less than some places at Wood Village with.
They have part of their city hall that was created and dedicated for their police department.
They have their own police.
Yeah, so it's within their city hall, they have area for that. The Multnomah County detectives, I think, are using that space now.
Okay. So I guess what would be the reality of something like that taking place with them partnering that is paying us for use of this building for kind of housing that sort of plan going forward, even if it's long-term?
Yeah, well, just what I have calculated, just in rough numbers, barely more than the three cities are paying now to Multnomah County, not the huge increase that they're asking for next year and the huge increase that I've told Fairview is going to be coming in two years when their contract comes up. We could provide all three cities a police department services that would be barely more than we're all three paying this budget year. You know, maybe a million dollars more divided, you know, three ways and population, but we would have something that East County owned and controlled for really a savings after, after what the sheriff's office is now asking for.
Okay. And that, I guess, has been pressed as leverage when it comes to, I mean, like, would they be on board with coming along with that to basically, I mean, stick up for ourselves as each of those?
Well, they don't commit at this point to that, but they have not said, no way.
Okay.
And depending on, for Fairview, unlike us, who have both contracts due at the same time, I'll stop complaining about however that got arranged, but Fairview's probably not going to feel the real heat for two more years when the sheriff's office is going to come to them to renew their contract and they're going to see the same numbers that we saw, which is unbelievable increases in personnel costs. I mean, inflation the last 10 years has been 33%. The F T E numbers that they're giving us now compared 10 years ago are 60 to 80% higher. I mean, double inflation is what they're paying their people now, or what they're claiming it costs them now. Fairview's going to get that in two years. And I also know, just generally, of the three cities, Fairview is probably the most challenged right now financially. And so their problem is going to be, hit them more acutely than it is us. We, luckily, for the last eight, nine years, we've been able to, it's the wrong phrase, Eric, I know, but we've been able to save about $8 to $9 million, which is the ending fund balance, if you look at our budget. But if we don't have additional revenues, we're going to eat that up really fast with all these increased costs. And having that cushion is nice to have if you want to do things like a skate park, if you want to do things like develop the 10 acres there next to Sandy Palisades to make improvements in the city. Hopefully I answered your question without providing too many words on top of it.
Thank you.
Oh, and just one more thing there. Yeah, whatever comments you make tonight to encourage or discourage staff from bringing this back to council, you can change your vote or change your mind between now and then. You're not committed at all, other than, yeah, we'd like to see it on an official city council agenda and deal with it in a fashion that is more formal and is actionable vote and is a more common way for citizens to express their concerns or approvals.
I have a question. If we were to do the public safety fee of like $15, like you said, how much time would you give the voters? Let them know that, hey, it's coming in 60 days, it's coming next month, it's coming?
It would be approximately 60 days advance notice. But then again, you could say, okay, sure, it can earn us this for a full year, but we want to start it not July 1, we want to start it August 1, to give them more time to adjust to it. I mean, it's kind of your call on the date you want to pick. Staff is just saying budget year, you just start at the beginning of the budget year. But again, that's up to your contemplation and decision.
And I'm more apt, and I think the citizens are going to be more apt to getting our Troutdale police back, more willing to fight for that than we are fire. Although I would love to have our fire as well, I just think that our citizens are going to really want that desire of Troutdale back that we have before. And I remember when this building was built, it was beautiful, it was great. And then when we went off to Multnomah County, the feeling of, we didn't build it for us, we built it for them. And I remember a lot of citizens feeling that way at the time when we were on our tours. And so I think that they would love to have our police back.
Yeah, I agree. Glenn.
I just want to say that I don't think we should, should follow up on this at all until the negotiations are over with police and fire. Because it really, it's like throwing a bucket of ice water on the negotiations, I think. Oh, Troutdale's already come up with a way to come these increases.
Therefore, let's have the increases go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about that too.
I think there's increases no matter what. Like it's going to be more, even if you, even if we had, if it was just 40%.
We should do it like that.
Increases are just going to be more. I guess I.
Do it preemptively.
Well, I will, it can be looked at that way, but, you know, the mayor and Councilor One have been involved in these negotiations pretty close for both of them for the last six, eight months, and as Councilor Allen has too. I don't see any chance that it's going to be less than 1.5 million, no matter what we do. The other concern I have that if we don't start doing something, Gresham may take that as an act of bad faith, that their citizens have been asked to pay $15 a month, their citizens have approved paying another buck 35,000. And so that's one of the motivations that Gresham has been, not only changing the methodology, but saying, hey, we've gone to our citizens and we've made them pony up more money for these services. What has Troutdale done to add, to join, join the pain? And so by not doing one, you take the risk of them going, oh, so you're not taking it seriously that?
Well, I don't think that's true. I.
Well, it's a possibility.
Agree to disagree. Like, I think we should do this because this is what's best for Troutdale, not because we're trying to show Gresham something at all. I guess in the spirit of this conversation, I would like to see staff bring back an option for utility fee, service fee. I'd also like to see staff bring back options for the future of what it looks like to have a, like a levy, and maybe that's, you know, you, we just keep putting a Band-Aid on it for years and years and years like other cities do. I don't agree with that necessarily, but what it would also look like for us to reestablish or establish a three cities police department, or, sorry, not police, a fire department, what it would look like to go to a district in the future and what we need to do. And I think by us doing that legwork and groundwork is showing the citizens also that we are looking for your future, we're looking at all the options and we're willing to put the work in while you are, in a sense, helping us cover this budget.
Yeah, I already started some numbers, but what I'm hearing you say is, what would a local option levy look like at certain levels? What would that raise in terms of funds? What would that allow us to do?
Yeah.
Absolutely, that would be part of the staff report, just as an additional information on the utility fee. Because like I said earlier, I would obviously suggest that if you do a local option levy to citizens, it goes hand in hand with, we'll take back the utility fee. So that it would be, you know, have to add more revenue, obviously, than that gave up.
Yeah.
But it would be a good faith thing for them. And we already have some of the information on the fire district about that cost and what it would look like. And I emailed the mayor the report, and as soon as I get to the office tomorrow, I'll email the rest of you for the economic report on that. And in that economic report, we told them last summer when they started preparing it, just hypothetically, give us a $10 utility fee and what would that raise? And you'll see that number in there, it would raise approximately $700, $800,000. But I, because I figured if I had a $10 one, I could easily add 50% of that if it was a $15 fee to get the number. But also the thing to understand about the intricacies of that, the way they calculated was just every utility bill in the city, whether you're a single-family home or an apartment complex, if you got one bill, you got one $15. Eric and I have talked, and the fair way to do, which a lot of cities do it, is, no, it should be determined by E R U, your equivalent residential unit. So then apartment complex pays more than $15. Amazon pays more than $15 for their one bill, so we don't disproportionately burden the citizens. And so that's where we get up to the 1.4 million approximately that Eric's calculated, if it's a $15 fee, and we wait it so we make sure that the bigger users are paying more, even if they only have one bill. So those are the kind of things we've gone through. So I think I hear what you're saying, Councilor One, and yeah, definitely will include that information, just to kind of know for planning purposes down the road, what will we need to do?
This is making, also, it just makes it, that we as a council are being mindful of now and the future, and we're looking at that, we're willing to put that work in.
Is that going to go through budget committee? We're pretty close to budget.
Well, the budget committee, the budget committee can't approve any fees and direction on that. They just have to review and approve the budget. The budget will include a utility fee, and we've had this discussion before with the chair of the budget committee. Is it just because the budget is approved with a fee does not mean the budget committee is, and you are half the budget committee. It does not mean they're approving the fee, that still has to go before council, but they're approving the budget with that fee in there. And if council doesn't approve the fee, they know they got to pull that income out and it changes the bottom line. So it is in there as a recommendation, and the budget committee obviously will discuss it and they can give their opinion, but you'll all be part of that discussion since you are half the budget committee.
Yeah, we haven't talked about the local option levy really, partly because that is, that's the, where you go to the voters and have a levy for whatever purpose you want to state, that is good for five years. It's on the tax bill, the voters have to approve it. It's only good for five years, and then after that, you have to go back. It doesn't really, to me, represent a long-term solution like joining, joining or creating a fire district or having our own police, which I do see as long-term solutions. And it might be done to support a police department, but it's not the fix for us right now. Right now, we're looking at the public safety fee really as the only thing that's immediate enough to help us at the moment. So Glenn, go ahead.
I was wondering if you were going to take public comment on this before we.
Well, it's our tradition to take public comment, but, you know, we never, we're not voting on anything here, so do you want, I could invite public comment right now. I mean, we keep talking, yeah, Jessica.
I just had, just one comment. Does it have to be a flat fee or could it be like a percentage? And I guess my thought with that.
Percentage of?
Instead of $15.
Oh.
To the water bill.
A percentage of what though? Because it's not really tied to the utility services, because those utility services are paid based upon calculations already done. So, yeah, I'm just thinking of logistics. If you try to say, well, we're going to charge you a percentage of your usage, that would give us an indeterminate amount of income because we don't know how much, say, water you're going to use.
The other ones that we've researched in other cities, none of them are percentage.
Never seen that before, yeah.
I don't know that there isn't a way to come up with it, but it hasn't been something that somebody else has pioneered yet.
My thought would be that in 10 years, $15 can be worth way less than if you were to say.
Well, you'll be asked to modify it if you need to, future councils.
Oh, you'll go up.
Only with council approval.
But you would only do it once. You would say, well, we're going to 10% of whatever your utility is.
Right. I think the reason that the cities use a flat fee rather than a floating fee or a variable fee is because the city of Jacksonville is the only city that had their, their utility fee challenged in court and was approved by the Court of Appeals. And it was a flat fee of either $10 or $15 per month on the, on the water sewer bill. So because everybody knows that one's safe, they do it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Good answer. As you know, most cities, they want to avoid litigation, so if you do it, somebody's already got approved, you just keep doing it because you know it's a safe haven.
Public comment? Oh, okay. All right. I.
Those appear.
No, no, it's okay. I don't mind doing public comment. We always do, we only have one agenda item at this work session, but if the council's okay, I'll, I'll open it to public comment and then we can continue our discussion after that, if that's agreeable. All right. Anyone on Zoom care to make public comment at this time?
Yeah.
Well, if it's Sandy or Paul, I see you out there, but I don't.
Okay.
Paul, I can hear you.
Yeah, I just unmuted. I missed that button. Polo Cox Trail Tale. Some prepared comments, as you would expect, and I have a couple of follow-ups that I kind of formulated from listening along. First, a few brief comments regarding City Manager Ray Young's March-April Troutdale champion article. The article states that Gresham passed a local option levy net last year, measure 26, 247, to help fund police and fire services. That's correct, but I questioned his cost estimate of adding about $400 per year to every home's tax bill. Voter's pamphlet statement sets the rate at 135 per thousand of assessed value. The stated average assessed value is 228,000 for an annual cost of 30780, not $400. The pamphlet statement pegs the cost at 2565 per month, which correlates to 30780. Of course, assessed value is going to go up 3% every year, and this is a progressive tax, meaning those with a higher than average assessed value will pay proportionally more. Gresham's public safety utility fee, on the other hand, is regressive because everyone pays the same regardless of income or property value. The current staff report states that only Troutdale and Wood Village among metro cities don't have a supplemental utility fee. Fairview's fee of 482 per month is to fund a maintenance building replacement, not for services such as police and fire. Also, one of the LOC's numerous recommended income enhancement options is the local gas tax, which Troutdale has had for several years, which of course required and received voter approval. Of the 35 cities in the K G W report, only 20 specifically mention public safety, the rest are mostly for street maintenance, which of course was the reason for Troutdale's motor fuel tax. There's also a huge range of fee amounts. In the interest of transparency, it should also be acknowledged that if the 175 In the interest of transparency, it should also be acknowledged that if the 175,000 police station building bond buydown is discontinued, property taxes will increase slightly. Providing the Exhibit C list of cities with local option levies demonstrates that they are achievable, but a compelling case for them needs to be made to voters. And while I've been listening along, I made some back-of-the-envelope calculations, so to speak, on what taxpayers would be looking at. I don't, I have no idea how much this, these different figures would raise for the city, but from a taxpayer perspective, this is what the numbers I came up with, using $220,000 as a assessed value, just arbitrary number, which I think is reasonable, might be a little on the low side. But anyway, the fixed tax rate for Troutdale, $376,000, would cost $827. A fire district rate of $285 per thousand would cost $627. The $15 per month utility fee would be $180. And then if you compare that with what Gresham is charging, their, their local option levy is $135 per thousand, which would be $297, add their $15 utility fee of $180, that's $477. So that's actually $150 less than the $285 for the fire district. So they're, you know, what they're charging now with both fees combined, this is actually less than the fire district alone, so that's kind of interesting. That's all I have for the moment, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone else on, yes, Sandy, good to see you.
Hey, good to see you too. So I chose, you know, one of the more boring meetings to jump in on, right? A couple of comments, and I remember first hearing this phrase was from our previous mayor, which was Read the Room. Troutdale's a pretty purple area and about as close to red as it gets, and right now, a lot of that is, you know, dismantle the government, they're okay with that. I think it would be important for us to plan on being turned down by voters. I don't think you can just go into this and assume that everything's going to be okay, we'll get a bond, we'll join a fire district, we'll tell people that, you know, this is what you need, and unless there are some cuts made that they feel and see, they're not going to appreciate what the consequences are. So I think that not cutting some things that let them feel and see some kind of pain, like, oh, look, you know, some of our parks aren't being mowed, or whatever it is, something that demonstrates that the city is actually making some pretty significant efforts, cutting back things they never would have thought would have been cut back. And then you probably have a pretty reasonable argument to go to the voters, but otherwise, I think you have to be prepared to be turned down and figure out what you're going to do then.
Understood, I, I agree. Anyone else on Zoom? How about here in the council chambers? Anyone care to address us on this? Oh, Tanny?
Good evening, everyone, Tanny Staffenson, Troutdale resident, I also sit on the Troutdale Budget Committee. A couple of things, and first off, this building passed by a whopping 322 votes when it was built. And I'll just tell you, that was a lot of people going door-to-door, weekend after weekend after weekend in the rain, and with share, or police officers in tow and the whole thing. And that was, that passed, I believe, because that group of people was beloved by our community, and the building they were in was pretty dang nasty. I don't know if it would have passed in another situation. And frankly, I don't think our track record's that good anyhow. Now, another thing, you know, how did we get here? It seems a little bit like this is like come up all of a sudden, and if that's the case, then we haven't been paying attention very well. You know, you look at it, in 2019, we passed a budget with $2 million deficit, ended up being to the plus $700,000, 20 was a $1,005,000 deficit. I'd go on and on and on, and then we had four years of Biden bucks coming in that bought it down, but the last two years, last year was a $5 million deficit, the year before was six. Okay, we don't spend that much, but let's do the math. Okay, we've been working this way for a while, and, and we need to understand that, we need to know that's coming. And it's also interesting, I hear a lot of talk about parks, and I love parks, don't have one by my house, I'm good with that, I'm cool, but if you look at it, okay, 2022, the Parks and Facilities budget was $1,006,000. 2024, it was $3,002,000. That's right, 100% increase, it increased by $1,006,000. I mean, I think the parks look great, but are, do they look like golf courses now for $1,006,000 more, doubling the budget? And then this last year, it was 3.2 million, or I'm sorry, it was 2.7 million, which is a 70% increase over, over three years ago. So I mean, it's, I don't think, it's not like we're not putting money into parks. Sure, we could put more in, but where do you balance that out? And that's the predicament we're in. If you look at it, you know, 2018, general fund, we had 51 employees, 312 was the population to each FTE, last year 63, 265 was the population FTE. So it's not like, you know, we're not spending more money, because we are, and it's not like we're not in a, in a tough position. I mean, you look at a lot of things, and like, Corbett's got its own fire district, okay? And those people pay for a fire district, and then they pay the city and county and all of that, but like up there, they pay like, the average is like $60 a home, more for fire than what they pay for the county library. I know that's not our problem, but it is a problem. And, you know, you look at taxes, people are going to have to pay more. How much more can they pay? I don't know the answer to that, but to think that really, we're going to hit them with a fire district, and they're just going to pony up for it, and we're going to take the general fund money and use it for something else that we decide's important, I guess as leadership, we get to do that, but do we really think that's going to work? Do we really think that's the right thing to do? I mean, maybe, I don't know. And then you look at your utility fee, now, if you're going to do this based on ERU, that's fine, but you're putting a lot more pressure on a smaller group of people. An example, yeah, they do a lot of business, got a lot of trucks and stuff, Amazon and FedEx, how often do they call the police department? They have their own security services down there, I don't think it's very often. So we're going to charge them more for a service that they don't use? They don't use parks at all. We charging them more because we need to, we charging them more because we can? I know it's a council decision, not a budget committee decision, but no matter how you do it, it needs to be very well thought out, because you're impacting a lot of people. And maybe some of us can afford it, and some of us, some of it, we can't, but we need to justify all those decisions to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have a, do you have a direction that you think would work?
For what?
To cover these increases in police and fire.
I, for me, I mean, we're trying to beat police and fire down as best we can. I'm not a proponent of moving the bond money, because I think that's a different conversation. I, I think, again, that's kind of a backdoor way of us breaking another promise. If we do that, the, the bond money could easily be made up, in my opinion, on this building itself. But I think you've got to put a whole number of things on the table, and I think our, our citizens expect us to do that. I don't know what they expect, what the expectation is, but I, I think it's different than what we're giving them today. I think they expect something different, we need to know what that is, and we need to know how to provide that for them. What is important to them? I don't know. I know, and I'm not picking on parks here, but it's one, it's like, you know, parks is important to us, is it as important to them? And where, where's the line? You know, when is it, I mean, even with the increase in the budget, or even before the increase, I never saw the parks looking like Vietnam. But it can always look better, and anybody's parks can look better. Anybody's city can run better, you can run better with more staff. But I think we have to put everything on the table, and we've got to go through it deeper than we have in a long time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tanny. Anyone else? Diane?
Because you want to, or because he's putting pressure?
Yeah, you're the, you're the only other person here.
You guys are doing a good job. Everything I wrote down, everybody's covering it, so I think it's a very productive, good meeting, and I've learned a lot. We were discussing budgeting, Citizens Advisory Committee, and that's why I decided to come tonight, to just see where you all are at, what you're thinking, and what the conversation is. Just one comment is, when we did get this building, I, I worked on the flyer, and I worked on the sign. The police were concerned with before, they, when they tried to get money before, on their sign, it said, "Police, yes," that was their sign, I go, yeah, it's too easy to say, "Police, no." So what, what we sold them on was, everybody in the community really loved the officers patrolling, their community engagement, and if you had an issue with your son, you might have the chief come over and have a conversation with the parents and the adults, and, and I appreciated Nelson doing that, so he was very, making it very caring about all of our kids, and, and what's going on in Troutdale, and so people love that patrolling and that relationship that we had. And at the same time, what I want to specify is, I support anybody providing us services, I support our sheriffs as well. I just don't know what the constraints were, whether it came from the county, or whether it came from the budget, that the main concern that I heard going around, that discontent with what's going on now was just not the patrolling, and the, the previous officers that we had that were Troutdale officers, they had the luxury of, if there was a certain situation going on within a street, that they would make sure they went, they went down that street five or seven times a day, just to kind of say, hey, we're here, you know, we see you, we're, we're, you know, following up, and, and so, and just people really saw that, that, that service was not able to be provided. And like I said, I support sheriffs, I support Troutdale police, but, and another thing is, $15, I think $15 is an easy ask, it's flat, it's not, you know, the percentage wise, then somebody goes, hey, I don't own my house, it's expensive, and you're going to tax me out percentage, I just think it's 15, sounds like a good rate, but also, at the same time of having those long-term solutions that you all are talking about, we're saying, allocating money, allocating more little cuts where we can, be more efficient where we can, make a little bit more money where we can, so that it's this whole holistic package of due diligence to, to the citizenry, so they can understand, or, you know, the attention was to save money, it didn't happen, prices go up, but, but he's, we're doing a study here, and we're seeing that it is viable to save money, having our own ser, services, and then also, it would there be another community component, and like, you know, that, we would think that we're going to get as top service as we possibly can, but a good conversation, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'm, I'll close public comment. Ray?
Just a couple of comments in response to some of the comments. As Tanny said, you know, we should have seen this coming. I'll defend myself and staff, no, I don't think we could have seen the, the extent of these increases coming. For the last 10 years, both contracts had a maximum increase of 4.5%. So we would assume that would continue, it's been the same for 10 years, which would have been about a $300,000 increase for next year, not the 1.5 or more that we now is still going to happen. We did not know that Gresham was going to change their methodology, or that the sheriff's office was going to tell us that their costs for providing their services went through the frickin' roof in the last 10 years, to where they were going to ask almost double initially. We didn't know that till last August and September. That was the first notice we had, we were not going to have a consistent increase that we'd had for 10 years. And as several of you know who've been involved, we've been working really hard since last fall, when we first found out about these two new truce, to try to get them down to a more reasonable level that we could manage. And as some of you know, we have worked really hard, and I, I think it's fair to say, we're, I'm going to consider it a success if we can keep it to 1.5 million or less, but it's going to be around that range. And so these are new ways of approaching these charges, it's not something we would have recently been able to anticipate. You know, we've been starting to talk to these people years ago, if some of you, I'm going to keep going on this one, because it really annoys me with Gresham, we have the Safer Council, which was all the cities and fire district, and we're all meeting together on a regular basis to talk about the future of fire services in East County, and three years ago, Gresham pulled the plug on that thing. That was the venue for where we talked about a fire district, where we were talking about what the future looked like for us, and Gresham shut it down and backed out of it, without giving us any indication that they were thinking of, of approaching us with a different way of calculating our, our fire service. Just for those of you who don't know, some of you do, for 30 years of our fire service, Gresham has charged us, what more does it cost them to add our coverage area? Because, you know, they already pay a full-time chief, so they don't have to increase that type of style, they just have to staff two more stations, well, for us, one more station, actually, and use the other stations. And so that's been the standing agreement for 30 years, but Gresham has decided, they're, they're not committed to it beyond that, but their, their council has decided that they want to charge us at a rate that's comparable to what every citizen in Troutdale, excuse me, every citizen in Gresham pays, which means we do pay for part of their coverage, that they would pay anyway without us, and we would pay for a system that we have no control over. And as much as I have tried for that period of time, last six, eight months, to push back on it, I failed, sorry, I tried. And those of you, like Counselor One and, and the mayor, who've been involved in this, know that, you know, we tried for months after we learned this new reality was happening, to try to get them to back off and go back to what the expectations were, and as some of you will read, and the mayor's going to read it, if you were back in March of 2015, the sheriff went on and on back in 2015 of saying, we're, we're cheaper than you guys running your own police department, we're a million dollars cheaper this year than running your own police department. They sold us on the fact that they were going to be cheaper than running it ourselves, and they came back with more expensive than it running ourselves. And so we were left with this agreement to give up our police department that was based on a premise that they are no longer honoring, and those are things that just came to light in the last six months, and so I don't know that we could have known these kind of things beforehand. The, the issues on, on the parks budget itself, you're going to get the budget for the last three years in your count, in your packets to show what we've spent, we just have to make sure we don't conflate capital projects in the parks budget with actual operation costs, because the operation for parks and facilities this current year is approximately $1.8 million for staffing and their normal operation cost, but there's a But there's a lot, of course, you know, buying a lawnmower in just in case one breaks, because we put it in there, you know, doing the skate park has been in there, but we never do it, things like that. So, and we've added parks, as you know. But anyway, thank you, mayor, I just wanted to touch on those issues that we did not come into this budget, you're expecting these kind of increases were gonna happen. And I don't think we reasonably could have, because they weren't talking to us about it beforehand. All right, I got a soapbox there, mayor, sorry.
No, it's all right.
You can tell it's a very frustrating issue to me.
I understand. I mean, it wasn't, we couldn't have anticipated everything that's happened. I don't know, further discussion at this point? I mean, yeah, Glenn?
I just think, and I think the citizen, if we do have to do this utility fee, would appreciate it if we explore more creative options to, like, how can we generate some revenue off some of our assets? This building being a big one, because we're getting a double hit. We're gonna take the one hundred and seventy-five thousand that we've been using to pay down this bond early, and we're gonna hit them with this utility fee. Because, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, all the people have gone through the Great Recession, the New Normal, the Great Reset, COVID. Our energy costs have gone up fifty percent, gas has doubled. You know, we've had shrinkflation and inflation on everything. And it's just getting, there'd be a lot to bear for a lot of people. And I think one of the reports we had is forty percent of our residents are mortgage burden now. And your only real option is to sell and move. Nobody wants to do that, you got your roots here. But I think we should wait, because I think it looks weak on our part for already trying to come up with the money for what they're asking for when we haven't finished negotiating it. And it also gives us time to explore other revenue options.
Well, that is a hard one to, how to parse out, whether we should arrange to pay the higher fees while we're trying to negotiate lower fees. But it wouldn't be long before we'd have to do it anyway. So if we can't, I mean, those of us involved have realized there's no good, solid, viable alternatives that we can turn to. We've tried, we've tried. And for both police and fire, and for the moment, we're trying to do the best we can with the negotiating skills we can muster. But I will say, on the one hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is the rent, I think the county pays for the building, used to pay down the bond, that was promised to the voters at some point. I can't remember how.
I haven't found any evidence it was promised, as I've looked.
I don't think it was when the building was built, it was promised after, maybe after the... Any recollection of whether that was a promise?
It was, from my recollection, mayor, it was discussed at council meetings, and individual councilors made the promise. I don't think there was ever anything written or, you know, in a voter's pamphlet, because the voters didn't vote on the police shift to the contract, but it was discussed during the general council discussions. So there was never a vote on it, but several councilors did promise that they would work on getting that achieved.
All right, I mean, I remember councilors advocating it, and I can't remember, it's possible I even supported the idea, but it, I think, okay, well, then, if it wasn't a promise, then I think your point, the rent paid on this building is something we should tap into and probably increase as just being fair to the voters if we're gonna start imposing a public safety fee. Ray?
Two things. One, the rent is gonna go up on this building, by the way. If we enter into a contract, it will gonna go up. We've gotten a consultant's report on what it should be, so it will be going up. We have to put that together. I know Tanny's seen a copy of it, and he and I, he's reevaluated and given me his input on it. So we're gonna be working on that. The other thing that was concerned about timing, we've just talked about it tonight, you're not committed to doing anything, but it wouldn't get to us on your schedule till one of the May council meetings. And I'm supposed to know by the end of this week what Gresham is doing with the three cities offer for how we should be charged. And so I'll know, hopefully, by the end of March, where they're at with that. The sheriff, I don't know where we're going. Mayor, you'll have a chance to get some more information tomorrow at your meeting. I would think by May, we should have a real better feel for where we're gonna end up, before you actually have to decide on a fee that goes on the utility bill. So, yeah, I hear the concern, but I think in reality, you're not gonna vote on it before we've had more information.
All right, John?
So does Gresham even need to know we're talking about this?
It's a public meeting.
They're not on here.
Well, you know, it's not a secret, but, but... Well, for one thing, it was in the champion that we were gonna be considering it, which is what we're doing tonight. We're not adopting it, we're not deciding, we are definitely considering it.
It's called due diligence.
Yeah, exactly.
I have another question, too. So apartments, will apartments get fifteen dollars per unit?
Apartments are calculated at sixty-seven ERU, so essentially, the best answer to that is, each apartment would be the equivalent of ten dollars, not fifteen dollars, as a single-family residence would be, freestanding home. And it would go on to the utility bill for the apartment owner, however they do that. And then it's up to them to decide if the market can bear, whether that means they're gonna increase it. I mean, that's up to the, but that's what the equivalency would be, about ten bucks per apartment.
All right, well, further discussion. I mean, we know the issues before us, and I think realistically, we're looking at having to raise more revenue, and we're being faced with a fee that none of us likes, probably, at least speaking for myself. I don't think Troutdale voters are gonna like it, but it looks like it's important to the livability of our city, so we're just gonna have to... Anyway, we need to think about it. We weren't intending to reach a decision, so if there's nothing further that anyone wants to say, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Call the roll, we're, motion to adjourn.
Councillor Andrews?
Yeah.
Councillor Allen?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Davidson?
Yes.
Councillor Mead?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, and so we are adjourned.
You're gonna get called into the office.
It's okay.
At least you didn't say Mayor Lauer, Mayor Casey, okay? It's one of the worst.
My fault.